Okay. We're all here. Jed, are you sure you can handle this? Okay. No. I can give you the same answer. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Are we good? Okay. We'll go ahead and begin by calling this meeting, this meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council to order. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Roger Rattanum.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Ms. Breeden.
Present.
Five I's motion carries, or we're all present quorum, whatever we want to say to that. There you go. I had to think about that one.
It's the five o'clock. We're all still a few off. Next item on the agenda is approval of our agenda for this evening. Do I have any edits or changes to the agendas presented? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Doesn't like you today, Peggy, so we'll do a roll call real quick and we'll fix it for open session. Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rattanum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five I's motion carries.
Okay. We will now adjourn to closed session in regards to conference of legal counsel and public employee performance evaluation. We will come out of closed session at 6:00 PM.
Public comment on closed session, Mayor?
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. Public comment on closed session, sorry. Is there any public comment on the closed session items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into closed session. We'll resume at 6:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, we're good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back out of closed session. We'll go ahead and begin by opening our regular session here with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I ask everyone to please stand? Chief, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Roger Rattanum?
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Lord, thank you for the freedom we enjoy in our country. Lord, I pray for our country and our leadership. Give them your guidance. Lord, especially I pray for the situation in Ukraine. Lord, we pray for the Ukraine president who is fighting this war. We pray for the people of Ukraine, for all of those who are suffering there and who are afraid and who are fleeing that country. Lord, give them your peace, give them your protection. Lord, let there be justice and peace prevail in Ukraine and all over the world. Be with us as we deliberate so many issues pertaining to our city today. Bless each one of us and use us for your glory. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Next is our attorney's report out of closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Council members, council considered one item which is reportable, and that is the claim of Cervantes under anticipated litigation on a 5-0 vote. That claim was denied.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have several presentations for this evening. We're going to do those first. So the first thing we're going to do is our Employee Years of Service awards. If I can ask the rest of the council to join me at the podium, and we will present those awards. Well, it is our pleasure as always to recognize our incredible staff here at the city, and we have several staff members who have reached what we call milestone years. And I get the pleasure of recognizing those who were unable to be here this evening, and then Mr. Blades will recognize those that are here. So we have three employees who are not able to be present here, and in their order of years of service. We have five years of service recognition for Franklin Mixon. We have a 10-year service certificate for Kyle Cushman, and Kyle, I hope you're out there doing what you do so well for our police department. Kyle was one of the first PD officers to reach out and get to know me when I was first considering running. It was, it's been great to do, I've done a ride along with him and just to see how, how his involvement's been, so congratulations to him. And then finally Sergeant Groves, Bill Groves, on his 15th year of service. And Sergeant Groves also I've had the pleasure of working with and represents our community and the PD well. So thank you to all of those individuals for their years of service to our community, and I'll let Mr. Blades introduce those that are here.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Wicknick, could you please, there you are. So Tom, as you, as you come up, I just wanted to give you the certificate in recognition for your five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. You've given so much more. I think we all know how much you've given to the city, but I appreciate your service and want to shake your hand.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Antoinette, you too have given so much to the community, not just, not just here, but this certificate is awarded to you in recognition of 15 years of service. Thank you so much.
Yeah, next one up is Mr. Hayman.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor tonight to present a recognition for 25 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest to Mr. Jim Humphrey. So Jim, if I could have you come up. While he's coming up, I'd just like to say that the city appreciates your 25 years of commitment to the, to the city and your hard work that you've done. But knowing on a personal basis, I can say that, that same commitment I see in your family and in your outside service to this community through public service, and you've done a stand-up professional job in all aspects of your, of your life, not just with the city. So it's my honor to present this to you. So we have a certificate here. And we have a plaque.
Everybody down.
Get out of here that quick.
Tom, Antoinette.
Do you want one of Mr. Humphries first? And then, yeah.
Just on basis of 25 years.
One photo with the three recipients.
One photo with the three recipients.
And then put you right over here.
No.
Put it over the way.
Can you, can you?
She's acting like you, right?
Let it go.
There we go, that's good.
Sorry.
My mouth.
(laughing).
All the recipients.
And if you could hold it for five seconds.
You made it, let us open it.
You're fine.
You're fine.
Thank you all for your service, guys. It does matter. We appreciate you. So the next item we have on our agenda is a proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest for National Transit Driver Appreciation Day, and I'm going to go and read that. So, "A proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest, California for National Transit Driver Appreciation Day. Whereas transit operators manage to keep a schedule, check fares, give directions, announce and remember stops, and whereas they safely maneuver public transit vehicles through unpredictable traffic and adverse weather conditions, and whereas transit operators transport people to various places that include work sites, schools, shopping, and activities, providing citizens from all walks of life with personal mobility and freedom. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of many people in this community greatly depends on their ability or rely upon the transportation services provided by our transit operators, and whereas the efficiency and effectiveness of these qualified and skilled professionals contribute to the quality of life that residents and visitors alike enjoy and rely upon, and whereas transit operators don't have an easy job. They just make it look easy. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council that we recognize and extend appreciation to our dedicated and skilled transit operators and hereby proclaim March 18, 2022, as Transit Driver Appreciation Day, proclaim this 16th day of March, 2022." Can I have any transit operators that are here come on up so we can recognize you? And there's one. Come on down. We need more transit. There you go. Thank you. A transit driver, transit department, transit.
Yeah.
I would say we may need to reconsider. If you guys have anything to say, thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I think the proclamation did a great job of addressing like the technical aspects that the drivers deal with, but I think that the human aspect is something that really these drivers excel at. You know, they're, some of the people we pick up don't really have, see a lot of other people throughout the month, don't have any, that are very many options to get where they're going, and our drivers do a good job of helping them as humans.
Today, I had a two-week-old little baby boy and her mother, and that, all the licensing and certification are just like, that just, that didn't even matter, just to see, you know, be trusted like that, to that level. Feels good.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our wonderful employees, their services, community, and of course, thank you to our transit drivers. And you said, you said it best, you know, there's nothing better than being entrusted by, by your community, and thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Next item on our presentations is we're going to get a Race Project utility update from Mr. Reed. That's you, you in the blue suit.
With no tie.
No tie.
That's okay. It's a style.
Thanks, thanks for pointing that out so I can get yelled at by the city manager. Appreciate that.
Yep.
In the blue suit?
In the blue suit, no tie.
I didn't say the tie. That was over there.
Director Hayman asked me to have a report. We had a couple utility strikes, and I think we've gotten to the bottom of it. We held a meeting with the two utility companies and with the third-party location service that they have that does their utility marks, and I think we've come to an agreement to try to prevent future damages. To date, Race has completed about 30% to 35% of their build-out. The two major strikes that caused outages for phone for, I'm going to guess, probably 30 to 50 residents. It was two incidents in two separate spots. I think we got to the root of the problem. We have put some additional measures other than the positive responses that are given on the locate tickets, as well as we're going to do pre-job walks before they bore, before they trench, make sure that everybody's comfortable with utility marks that are there, and that we feel it's adequate for them to do their work. And then they are also getting written notification from UtiliQuest stating that UtiliQuest has marked the facilities as requested, so that way we can hopefully prevent future damages. The two damages that were happened, they were kind of fluke deals. The, one of them was an abandoned water line that the machine they used to locate picked up the steel line and was tracing the steel line rather than the cable. The cable was actually outside of the easement and was 18 feet away from where the marks were. So it was, it's really hard for somebody when you're only required to pothole two foot in either direction to find that line. So they didn't even know that they had cut the line. The other one was one that the locator couldn't pick up the signal after it went under a wall. There was a damage prevention officer out there that said that they believe it was dead. So we have required them now that anytime they get word that a line is dead, that they need to verify it with the utility company to make sure it's dead, rather than assuming it's dead and moving on and people being out. Since then, we've had two water service strikes on the end of a cul-de-sac. With my experience with locating for the water district, it's tough when you get on the end of a cul-de-sac because you don't know how they dug their ditches, and since most of the services are polywater lines, there's no way to actually hook up to them and know where they are exactly. So where the marks are, they go four foot, two foot in either direction, they look for it. If they can't find it, you're basically digging or boring blind. We spoke with the water district maintenance supervisor, and he felt that they were doing their due diligence and trying their best not to hit things, so really nothing we could do there. One was an Edison strike. The Edison strike was in relation to, they got a positive response on a ticket saying that it had been marked. One of the Edison lines that was per the Edison plan was actually running a different, in a different location, so they didn't even know there was an Edison line there, and they struck the Edison line. They had three blocks out of power for about six hours, but that got fixed, rectified by SCE, and that's why we have put additional measures in place for receiving not only positive responses on the tickets, which we had had some issue with getting those at times, and then getting verbal all clears. So now we're requiring all clears to be in writing as well as positive responses on the ticket. So we're trying to put more measures in place than are required by state law to prevent our residents from having any more utility outages. With that said, with roughly 8,000 to 9,000 feet of underground that they've put in and numerous poles, I still think they're doing a great job. You're going to have, with infrastructure as old as ours, you're going to have utility strikes. It's just inevitable. But I think they are doing their due diligence, they are trying, and they are trying to rectify some of the stuff that has gotten, not, I don't want to say put on the back burner, but has gotten left because they didn't have somebody doing concrete, they're trying to get their concrete caught up. We've had some citizen complaints about the status of cold mix, how it's been left on sidewalks. They have rectified that, they are compacting it and making sure that there's no tripping hazards in sidewalks. So I do think that all the major problems and major concerns that we've been having have been addressed, and we do have a plan in place now to try to prevent future marks, I'm sorry, future strikes. In relation to the trench lines that you see that are white, those are not completely patched yet. We were experimenting with a black pigment dye in the slurry, so that way it would be the same color as our roads, but the alkali in the water is surfacing and turning it white anyways. So HP came back to us and basically said they are going to go back to normal colored slurry, and then they are going to cap the top of that with a sealant-type material after the fact. So a lot of the trenches that you see are not 100% yet, they're at, I would say, the 90% mark because they haven't capped them, but I do feel like they are doing their due diligence, and hopefully here in the next eight to 10 months will be built out and done. And I did get word from Frontier that Frontier is planning to do fiber upgrade, too, so we will have two fiber-to-doorstep service providers, so that should be a good thing for the community. And they are actively working with us right now to try to get into the roads that they need to dig on before we pave, so that way our new pavement doesn't get cut. And with that, I was going to prepare a presentation for you guys and show you some pictures, but I just, I apologize, I didn't have time to get to that this week. It's been a crazy week, and the week before that it was a crazy week. So I'm open for any questions that you guys have in regards to the issue.
I have one question. And so is Race being proactive in coming to the city and to fix, you know, the issues that they have, you know, either in the past or future incidents that may arise, so that we're not having to chase them down to correct their mishaps?
Yes, they have been. We actually changed their response pattern for how we want things to be notified. The subcontractors that they have to Race, which is HP Communications and S&amp;B Communication now, they're both reputable contractors. They understand that when they have a damage, their first step is to notify 811 and USA Dig of a damage. And then if it's a sub to HP, the sub will then call the project manager for HP, who will then get ahold of our inspector and work on notifying all the utility agencies, notifying the city, and notifying everybody that needs to be notified, so that way when calls come in from residents, we all have the same information and we can preach the same song and dance. So I do think they are doing their due diligence. They're trying their best. Nobody wants to hit anything, but with how much pipe they're putting in the ground, it's, we're good, we're still going to have more utility strikes. It's inevitable with how old the infrastructure is.
I was just going to ask, how far behind are we on the sidewalk fills? I mean, I know we went through two companies, and I know you're catching up, but are we running?
Um, I would say of the, let's just say, let's call it they're 35% built out, I would say to date they're probably 10, 10 to 15% of their sidewalk remediations have been completed. They do have a dedicated crew now that is going back and doing infrastructure repairs, so all the final cleanup for concrete and sidewalks and things like that. I did tell them that it's not above me to go and pull all your encroachment permits until you get caught up if it's not, if we don't have people actively working on it. So they are, they have dedicated a crew to do it, and they are looking for some local assistance with some of the local contractors to try to get them to help with some of the repairs. Most of our local contractors are busy, so that is a little bit tough for them to get, but they're, they are actively working and actively seeking somebody, people for help for that.
That was what I wanted the public to hear, is we, we know they're out there, and we're actively working for the solutions on them. We know, you know, sometimes not that far off, and we know that you guys are imagining this black tar pit hole of sidewalk. No, we're getting to it, guys, trust me. We're, we're moving as quickly as we can get good contractors out there. One of the things that the public may not be aware of is, the reason why there's a delay is because the, the work that was being performed wasn't to the quality that the city expected.
So we have, there have been four subcontractors now that are no longer performing work in the city. The latest one that they have is S&amp;B Communication, and it's the one that we hope we've asked them to stick with. They do a good job. We had a couple of issues upfront with them, but they have now since been rectified. We are doing pre-job walks to make sure, we've had some fraudulent utility marks that we can't figure out where they've come from, and the reason why we know they're fraudulent is because they're the wrong color. You don't mark electrical lines with orange paint. Electrical lines get marked with red. There's dedicated colors per the state laws and marking laws that require certain colors for certain utilities. So that is why we're doing job walks now and why we are doing positive response as well as written communication that UtiliQuest has marked the lines that they need to mark, so that way we can hopefully avoid future impacts to our residents.
You'll have to explain to me how they, how fraud gets into the lines at some point. Not, not right now. I just, I'm curious how that connects up.
Quick, so this may be, your answer to me may be no. Does Race share with you updates, like, they probably give you percentage updates, but anything with any more granularity than that?
No, not really, and all the, the percentage updates are rough numbers because this S&amp;B Communication gets anywhere from about 400 to 500 feet of cable in the ground a day. So it's, it's really, it's kind of a best guess, because if you use their percentages of what they have complete and you try to say, okay, we estimate they're going to be done in six months, that's all dependent on what they find. They could have roads where potholes could take them double the amount of time.
So I don't think it's so much a timeframe. I think what, what concerns people is they know that there's work going on in their neighborhood, and nobody's told them that, well, there's going to be, you know, conduit laid, not permanent, okay, and then we're going to put fiber through. There's just, there's a whole process that people aren't aware of. I think just a simple, your neighborhood's done, or your neighborhood's not done yet, you still got work left to do, just, and I'm not asking you to go off and add that work, I was just saying, if, if those are being provided to you, maybe you could pass them through to our public outreach department, so that we could make something like that happen. If it's not happening, then I don't know if it's something we really want to request to the contractor to do extra work.
So typically it follows this pattern. It goes, they put their running lines in, that's all your main conduit feeds, so like they'll have their running line that goes parallel to your street center line, and then they have their stubs that run across the street or run to the adjacent properties, and those are done by another contractor. HP's been doing all the running to right-of-way line, I would say, for now. So you've got your major company, which is S&amp;B, who's putting in the running line. HP follows behind them to do the fiber to your doorstep, for lack of a better term. And then there's another crew that comes in after the conduits are in and will actually pull the fiber cable through the conduits up to the houses or to their pool boxes or whatever they're doing for now. So it's, it's, it's really a three-step process, and depending on where they're at with their backbone and where they're at with their fiber to the doorstep, and when they're going to light an area up, which we're hoping to see, the last talk I had last week with the construction manager for Race, they're hoping to start turning people on within next month. So people will start seeing services being offered to them within the month, so. But it's, it's tough to say, because then you're looking at schedules between three different contractors and trying to weed through what they're going to have coming, so.
I was just, if I, of course, I'm not there. Hindsight's 2020. I would like to think if I was running the project, that I would, I would know where my people were going to be at in the city and where they were at in their progress, and I just didn't know, and I'm sure they do. I was just wondering if something like that was even passed through to you, if you could pass it through to us. If it's not, I'm not expecting it.
So we do, we do get a daily locate, which is a little Excel spreadsheet that shows the five to seven to nine crews that they have and where they're going to be for the day, a general vicinity. That is something we could pass on, so they would know who the foreman is. I could ask Race if they're willing to let me share that information. It's shared with us, so we know where it's at.
Yeah, that's probably a conversation you need to have with them offline.
So.
So, okay, I don't, no further questions. I don't need to beat that one up.
Solomon, Peggy, anything?
I just wanted to understand.
Microphone, microphone, Peggy.
I'm sorry.
Microphone.
I just wanted to understand with various companies laying lines at the same time, is there been any issues with the two companies or others utilizing the same services, and are we having any issues at all in that way?
I guess, I don't know exactly what you mean by utilizing the same services, so Race is putting in their own backbone for their own service.
Right.
A lot of, you'll see a lot of littler poles going up next to big poles, and we do get a lot of questions asking why these poles are going up.
That's where I was going to ask. That's where I was going.
So the, the poles go through a detailed engineering look, and they are determined if they meet the GL95 requirements for the California Public Utility Commission. If they do not meet the requirement for wind loading, for earthquake loading, for any of those loads, because they're due for replacement, a temporary pole is being set right now. We have talked to Race and talked to their subcontractors about verifying and making sure that the locations that they put the temporary poles are suitable with the owners as well as suitable with their infrastructure. Sometimes you can't necessarily get a perfect location, because where the homeowner might want the pole won't work for where they're at, but as long as they're within the right-of-way or within the utility easement, they have the right to put the pole anywhere in there. So it's kind of a fine line. I think they've been doing an okay job. We've had two or three issues with pole locations, but once we've explained that there's an easement there or that there's the right-of-way there and they have the right to put the poles there, most people tend to understand that. Last week I got a call, which I still have to call the lady back, with an issue for where they were parking their want the pole won't work for where they're at, but as long as they're within the right-of-way or within the utility easement, they have the right to put the pole anywhere in there. So, it's kind of a fine line. I think they've been doing an okay job. We've had two or three issues with pole locations, but once we've explained that there's an easement there or that there's the right-of-way there and they have the right to put the poles there, most people tend to understand that. Last week, I got a call, which I still have to call the lady back, with an issue for where they were parking their trucks within the easement and how they were getting to them. So, that is one issue that I still have to clean up with them, but in doing my due diligence with utility strikes, I just haven't had time to go back and fall back and talk with her and explain to her how it works, why they're doing what they're doing. And the big, the big question is, is we don't know when SCE or whoever is the owner of the pole is going to get back out to change the pole out. As poles start getting changed out that don't meet the criteria for engineering, those temporary poles will start disappearing, and all the utilities will be on the primary pole.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
But we are, like I said, we are actively working on it and trying to do our due diligence. Race has a dedicated outreach team. Contractors are, have been instructed to go door-to-door, knock, let them know, hey, we're gonna be here, this is what we're doing, to try to give them an idea of what's going on and why it's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council may not take any action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour, and we will begin from the floor. Each speaker is asked to state their name. Do we have any public comment from the floor? Floor is yours, sir.
All right, good evening, Councilman Sean Conley, UFCW steward. I should say, proud UFCW steward. We've assembled a nice little crew here tonight, and I kinda went over my time quite a bit last time. We had a little discussion and stuff. I wanna thank you guys for your strong words of support. I really appreciate that, especially Councilman Hayman and Councilwoman Breeden. Really, really appreciate that, and looking out for my guys, you know, I had to adjust my presentation a little bit last time and cut a few things out, but I would like to just point out that we spoke about last time, the medical increase. About the time that we were getting that, CalPERS was also projecting a 23% increase in the medical cost to the employee. So, we received that medical increase about the same time, and the actual cost did go up about 22.9%, so they were pretty close in their prediction for that. I also just wanna mention, it is Transit Day now, so, you know, that's, that's our department, that's the UFCW. We really do appreciate the great value that those transit drivers bring to the city of Ridgecrest and the, the fine work that they do. There we go, brother, appreciate you. There's a few other things I'd like to point out. It's been a problem since about January with the new salary schedule. In order to meet the minimum wage requirements, the city was forced to compress our 11-step program with the two longevity steps at 15 and 20 years into about a seven-step program, even though we are contracted with our union to have an 11-step plus two longevity-year program. In doing so, quite a few employees, the Parks and Recs Department was hit particularly hard with this, basically had their years of service, you know, if you're a step four, you're slid down to step one, you'd be making the same dollar as a brand-new, day-one employee, regardless of your years of loyal service to the city and the knowledge and skills that you had developed in that time. I tried to make some sort of deal where we could, you know, give those guys their steps back or something like that, you know, anything, or at least fill out the contracted salary schedules. Unfortunately, we couldn't come to any kind of agreement on that. But I was informed by my union representative that the openers for this year were not officially closed, and we will be meeting again with Mr. Strand in early May, so I'd like to just say, if there's anything you guys have, you know, our negotiation is really with you guys, with Mr. Strand as the, you know, the middleman, I guess, for lack of a better word. So, you know, we really appreciate your guys' support and looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Sean, I would just say that we would welcome you at a finance committee meeting at any time, because I promise you that your words are not going on deaf ears.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Steve Zamron, City Maintenance. I'm here to make a comment about a couple comments that were made on two previous council meetings by the city manager, Mr. Strand, that bothered me, and it, it was in reference to, after Sean made his presentation, he made a comment about the wages of the maintenance people and the city police department, how grossly underpaid the city department is, which I can understand. We are grossly underpaid as well. The next meeting, he, we, you guys had a meeting and found X amount of dollars in some fund, I don't know where it came from, and I didn't, I don't understand that area, but his comment again was, if we give the city maintenance and parks people an upgrade of either their, their COLA or an upgrade, then in two years, we're gonna create furloughs. Why wouldn't that be standing on giving the police department an upgrade in pay? Where are the furloughs, excuse me, where are the furloughs for that? You know, where, where is he talking from? He's backing up his, his former status as a police officer. I can understand that, but when you don't support, we had support from the council, from Madam Breeden, with getting us upgrades and COLAs. I've, I've been here 16 years. I've had one raise, and that was two years after I got hired on, and that's it. That's it.
That doesn't work.
It's not right. It, it isn't. But his comments didn't sit right with me, and I don't know how many other people it didn't sit right with, but it's been on my mind for a long time, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, to back Sean up and, and what he's doing, and to get that out. It wasn't, to me, appreciated in the way he, he doesn't, he doesn't support, it sounds like, he doesn't support, council supports, but he doesn't as a manager.
Well, so it was actually, do you mind if I respond back to you, Steve?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I don't know if I'll be able to answer it correctly.
No, 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 that's, that's okay. It was just, and I'm only responding back to you, because I think that I can at least clarify. I think that's legally right, Martin, I can give a comment back. You'll stop me if I'm out of bounds. Okay, that is that, everybody, the council, I can speak for them in this case, still support, Mr. Strand still supports. What he was referencing is that he's worried and he's looking at us like, hey, guys, make sure what you do, you're careful with it, because what we don't wanna do is give everybody a raise in the city, not just the police department, and then have to furlough people, because I think there have been councils in the past that have had to do that. They have given raises, and then they have seen where, have to go back in and then furlough people, so what good did we do? Now, if, uh, maybe he didn't deliver that well. I don't know. I don't know about his delivery, but not my, not for me to pontificate.
I understand that, but, you know, in 16 years, one increase for us, how many has anybody else, whether it's been staff or police department, been increased in, in some sort of a raise?
Sure.
You know, we're out here in this, and the council at one time wanted to do a survey for, out in the streets, because they wanted to possibly get an increase in hazardous pay, because we are sitting out in the street with the crowd in 178, and, you know, the, the people driving so close to us. That was a couple of years ago. I don't know how many of you remember that ser, that comment, that survey was gonna be going on, but we heard nothing of it also. So, that's another thing that I'd like to find out about.
Was that the staff survey that was done in 19?
It wasn't, it wasn't, I think it was six years ago, when the comment was made. I don't believe any, a survey was done at that time. I would have to verify it, but I did not hear about it.
Okay, some of my, my fellow workers were talking about that, that they had remembered hearing about that was gonna be done, and where it came from, I don't know.
Steve, have you asked Ron that?
But it's something that you guys might wanna look at also.
Have you asked Ron that before you came to us to explain your interpretation of what he said?
I don't see, I don't have the opportunity to see Ron at any time. I'm out doing my thing for you guys, for the city. So, I don't, I don't have the opportunity to do that. I don't have an email on it, so it's...
Steve, there's no words that, that any of us as council members are going to be able to give you that, that help, and, and, but I just wanna make sure that, I wanna reiterate a couple of things. One, everyone is welcome at the finance committee meeting to see just how we're reacting as council members on this concern.
Yeah, well, that's something that's in his hands.
And you all are welcome. And second, is we have a very tumultuous, tumultuous, I'm saying, me and my English.
Man, don't get them those...
We have a very chaotic next eight months in front of us, in terms of solving the revenue issue as well as solving this issue, and, and I can just give you that commitment that, I promise you, what our biggest worry is, is making such a, the level of adjustment that is deserved, and putting our city in a position where, two years from now, we're then having to reverse that because we don't have the support of our citizens. I wanna make that real clear, that, that, that there's not a barrier between us and wanting to make sure that this is done correctly and fixed. There's a barrier between us making the commitment and then putting you guys under greater strain by then having to reverse further positions, and I think that's where we've, we've been working on a revenue solution for close to two years now, and we're getting close to being able to say what we're, where we're going and what we wanna do and how it's, how it can change the city. But I can just promise you, attend one of those meetings and, and, or talk to any one of us personally, I promise you, every single one of us is absolutely strongly dedicated to making sure that the staff salary problem is solved.
Right. One thing that you ought to be aware of also with this is, February 7th of this year went into effect that anybody wanting to become a commercial licensed driver has to go through a outside training source. It's no, there's no more in-house training like we used to do here.
Of course not.
It's gonna cost the city money to get people to, qualified drivers, class A drivers and B drivers at the salary that you're paying right now.
I absolutely agree.
It's not gonna happen unless something else does, so.
I could not agree with you more that, that the state keeps offering bureaucracy in order to make it more expensive.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Good evening, Mike Sonat. Two things, I wanna say thank you to whoever it was that got the, the sides of South Channel Lake Boulevard cleaned up. I don't know if anybody noticed, but over the last two weeks, this, I think it would probably be the state or Caltrans showed up and braded and removed the garbage that's been accumulating there for at least six or seven years.
You said South Channel Lake, where were we talking?
Yeah, between the Shell Station and Albertson's.
Oh, okay.
All of that, all that has not been touched in six or seven years.
That's us, then.
And...
Yeah.
That's those guys right back there.
Thank you, really. I don't, I don't know how to tell you, you know, first impressions matter, and, and it's, to me, it's sad that that hasn't happened before the earthquakes and when we had all the TV trucks coming into town, but that's neither here nor there. And I, the other thing is, I went over and looked at the, the Welcome Center this week, and I think that's just great. I'm gonna use that just to go meet people, if they don't, if they don't kick me out, but I, I think that's a really great, great addition, and so, anyway, I'm happy to see those two things, and good luck to you guys.
And let me just share a compliment there. Mike, thank you for that, and, and again, thank you to Mr. Blades, who's becoming Mr. Trash, but they were out there doing maturango as well on both sides, and, and we've said trash is an issue, but we keep reminding everyone, give us time to get all the pieces rolling in different ways, and, and we'll try to deliver on those promises. Any other public comment? Seeing none from the floor, do I have any public comment on the phones? Caller, state your name.
Yes, name's Mike Neal. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna make further comment on an issue that I have sent all of you some, at least one email on. This is concerning the city's proposed use of the Swarvee State Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Act. Now, that act appears to be daunting, but if you really look at it, the real media is only about the last four pages, started on page 417, where all the potential and allowed uses are delineated. Now, as I said before in the previous email, which I got no response to really much at all, other than one real short one, there's about 30-plus possible uses. I'll just, for the record, I'll just read off some of those right now, and I'll try to keep track of the time here, since I don't get to look at your timer. One, assistance for food. Two, emergency housing needs. Three, home repairs. Four, cash assistance. Five, programs to address impacts of lost instructional time for students in grade school. Six, development repair, operation of affordable housing and services to increase long-term housing security. Seven, here's, here's an important one in my mind, benefits for surviving family members of individuals who died from COVID-19, including cash assistance to surviving spouses or dependents of such. Now, I believe the report was, we had at least one person die here in the valley from COVID-19. My question would be, if any of the council members looked to give that unfortunate family any assistance. Eight, one, assistance for individuals who want and are available for work. A lot of people got thrown out of work and don't seem to be able to find it for one reason or the other. Housing vouchers, relocation assistance. Ten, here's your favorite one that you wanna spend it all on, parks, recreation facilities, number 11. Twelve, programs that increase access to healthy foods. Thirteen, services to address vacant or abandoned properties. Fourteen, loans or grants to mitigate financial hardship such as declines in revenues or impacts of periods of business closure, which I know we had a number of. Six, number 15, is providing technical assistance for such needs. Sixteen is rehabilitation of commercial properties such as the thought improvement. Seventeen, here's one that was certainly not brought up, business incubators, grants for startups for small businesses, programs or services to support microbusinesses. Some of you businessmen really ought to be able to appreciate that one. Eighteen, a lot of the nonprofits kicked in. Well, they ought to be able to get some of this money. This says you can, you can put out money for assistance to nonprofit organizations who have helped try to mitigate financial hardship for people. And nineteen, one of the city's favorite ones, they recently spent a lot of money on, assistance to tourism, travel, hospitality. That's only 19 out of the over 30 in the delineated possible uses for these funds, and yet, from all appearances, and everything I can find out, the only thing the city did was decide they get a bunch of brand-new police cars, which I haven't found anything in the delineated uses that would apply to buying police cars, and spend it all on parks. Now, I realize one council member told me, well, there were loans given out, and apparently some of those were turned into grants. However, I was also apprised just today that there are people who worked as private kind of contractor jobs, they didn't get in on that, and we're talking about your hairdressers, your nail salon people, your, you know, personal service people, a lot of whom, a lot of whom are put out of work. And my question would be, has there been one single inquiry by the city to any of these particular subgroups, people or businesses or anything, anything on this, this whole long list outside of the two that you only wanna spend money on? Have you looked at any of this? And this is what I'm talking about, about holding you accountable. If these people here in town find out that they could have gotten some assistance through this, and all they can see is bigger, better, greener parks, they're gonna be really, really not happy whatsoever. So, I would really like to see you broaden your horizons here on the use of this money, and not just use it just as, look at it, oh, they told us we could spend it on parks, that's one out of 30, we'll spend it all right there. That certainly does not make sense to any thinking person. That's what I'll have to say. Thank you. you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other callers? Okay, I see no other callers. Any other public comment from the floor? No problem. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, council announcement, sorry. I was very ready to jump over a second one. Any council announcements? And I'm going to let Solomon go first, so nobody steals his thunder.
No, I don't have one.
You have one. You have to have one.
We are all sold, so.
Well, you still can announce it. We can see, people can still give money to it.
Rotary Club of China Lake, they have a Dollars for Scholars auction. This event, we raise money to high school students going to college. We give scholarships to them. We give scholarships to Immanuel Christian, Barros High School, Trona High School, Muskeet, and also homeschoolers. So every year, we raise around 25,000 and give that 25,000 to all the students from Indian Wells Valley. So this event is on this Saturday. So I'd welcome you to come for the event or make a donation. So I really appreciate the community service, community support. This year, we had overwhelming support from the community. So I really thank the community for their support on this.
And how many years have you guys been doing that?
Since I involved, I got involved, 10 years back.
10 years. I would say, I just want to, you know, just to imagine that Rotary Group has been running this and has contributed thousands of dollars to the education of our youth, and thank you for that. And I know you've headed that up for several years.
I kind of do the same to the club.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. Any other council announcements?
You know, I didn't get to say in the last council meeting that you, Mr. Mayor, gave me the opportunity to judge Youth of the Year.
Oh, yeah, you did.
Yeah, so it was on base, and there was, I got, I guess this is going to, it's going to sound cheesy, but it was really motivating. It was awesome to sit with these, with these youths, to talk through them, like, I mean, looking at, they built a resume, they built a whole packet, right, where they show you a resume of how they're doing with their grades, all of their scholastic achievements, all the things that they're doing. Then they give you a speech, and then you question them. And to see kids of this age, you know, maybe I'm just, you know, not as plugged in as I should be, but it was just, it was inspiring. It was exciting. And I got to sit along with a couple of different members of the community. One was the XO. It was motivating. And so we had one, the Youth of the Year, at least here at China Lake, was Anisha Artis. She was, she did an excellent job. Everybody would have been impressed. So I just wanted to make sure that was, that was put out there. I guess the other announcement we had is, as a council member, I went up to ICSC in Monterey, and that was just for the city, talking to other businesses, seeing what we could do to get things in here. That's all I got.
Anything for you guys? No? Okay, so I got a couple. First, I would like to welcome the community to come out this weekend to the Desert Empire Fairgrounds for the home show. Getting it back, getting people back out and seeing each other and just able to do those things. If you haven't been out to a public event, it is emotionally fulfilling in some weird psychological way, trust me, just to see friends again. The other one is, if you happen to want to see some of the incredible youth in our community, the final Saturday of the youth basketball is this weekend at Kermagie. I've had, I have kids there, so I get to see this every week, but I don't know that the public does, to see the efforts that our Parks Department does in making these opportunities for our kids to participate. And soccer starts, I think, the week after. So it's really great to see these programs coming back, and I'm just happy to see our kids out running and playing and doing those things.
Can I add one thing to that?
Absolutely.
Just last night, I got a chance to talk to a Girl Scout troop. They wanted, they were going through democracy, and they wanted to speak to somebody from their local representative. I told them that they could happily come down and meet the council. Peggy, you did this for years. You would have Girl Scout troops come and, yeah, and I, so they could come down, they could meet, I'm sure they could meet the staff if they were willing. I offered up the chief of police. They could definitely talk to the chief of police.
We did it in the past where we asked them to make a presentation to the council, and the council was the scouts. And they were amazing, and they, and what was the most exciting part of it, the thoughts that went into the description of the project. And they were, there are going to be some good council people coming up, listening to those youngsters.
They're going to develop something, and they want to present it to us.
Yeah.
So.
Great. Good job.
Just as another comment to you, Peggy, you remember you did it for years and years ago for Garrett. I actually served at a Cub Scout event, and one of the requirements is to speak to a public official for them to rank up. And they just put me in a corner and said, here's your public official. And I used your exact scenario where I divided the groups into two, and then had them argue against each other. And I said, welcome to politics. And it was, it was, so your leadership in that meant a lot, and I love seeing those youth get out there.
Thank you.
It means a lot. I think there was another council announcement, but I can't remember what it is. I'll pick it up in final comments, I'm sure. Okay. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to have an item pulled or to ask questions. If a common or discussion is desired by anyone, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council concerning the item before action is taken. I will read the four items on our consent calendar for this evening. Item number one is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated March 2nd, 2022. Next is announcing proclamations prepared for the month of March and scheduled date of presentations. And I do have, do you want to pull that item for the revision, since it's in consent?
No, I don't want to pull it. I just want to announce that the date has changed. In the agenda packet, it said it's on April 1st, but it is not. The awards ceremony is April 8th.
And that's for the Blue Jackets, correct?
For the Blue Jackets, yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, that's a small amendment to the agenda, but it's not anything that has any relevance to the approval. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances on the authorized agent forms for the low-carbon transit operations program for the following project, battery electric van replacement purchase. And number seven is approval of professional services agreement with Alshire and Winder for legal services. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
Item number seven, please.
Right. Number seven. Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Thank you, sir. And then we'll pull out item number seven. It is removed and we consider it in listed sequence. Do we have, so do I do, I apologize, I don't know why I'm brain farting. Do I do these three now and then come back to seven, right? Okay. So do I have a motion for approval of items four, five, and six under the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
My apologies. I should have known that routine, but I didn't know when you said listed sequence, how it was going to move. Okay, item number seven. Item number seven is approval of a professional services agreement with Alshire and Winder for legal services. Mr. Rajaratnam.
Couple of changes I'd like to make to the City Attorney Retainer Agreement. When you go to item number 15 on the agreement, execution, it says the effective date is March 16th. So what I'm hearing is the effective date is April 1st. So am I correct, Martin McConaughey?
I got it.
Okay, right. I also would like to add, it is left to the attorney.
Just let me jump in there real quick. Is it might be slightly different. The language states that it was executed at a regular meeting, and it goes into effect on April 1st.
So where does it say that?
Item number 15, is that what you're speaking of, at execution? It says execution of this agreement at a regular meeting on?
March 16th.
March 16th, which is today.
You're talking about number 15?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just the date of approval. That's not a date of...
So where is the date of effective date in the agreement?
I think if any correction should be made, the effective date should be stricken
Correct.
From that paragraph.
And then it would, I would assume that in the bottom, the bottom... Effective date, that the parties have caused this agreement to be executed by their duly authorized officers as of?
In the first paragraph, in the, actually, the prologue to the agreement, as of the effective date of April 1st, 2022.
As of the, okay, the April 1st date in the prologue.
Instead of indicated below.
Okay, do you see where that he's mentioning? Okay, thank you.
And thank you, council member, for catching that.
Most welcome. So also, do you think we should add a clause for termination of the existing contract with OMLA?
I do not, that clause would not be necessary. OMLA would cease to exist as of April 1st. But in the motion, if there is a motion to consider this to be approved, that can be included, that, along with approving the agreement, termination of the OMLA contract effective April 1, 2022.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Does any member of the public wish to comment? I'm going to give it, I'm going to give it 15 seconds out of politeness. Okay. Hearing none. Do I have, we'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of item number seven, approval of a professional services agreement with Alshire and Winder for legal services? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is that motion with the, with the...
Yes, with those, all those.
With the conditions described. Okay, I have a motion with the conditions described. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. We'll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Heyman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five eyes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number eight. This is a public hearing. We'll be going to open the public hearing in regards to a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council summarily vacating a certain pedestrian way bound on the west by lots 53 and 78 and bound on the east. We will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:01 PM. And Ms. Burlock.
So this, we heard this in the last city council meeting, and at that time, we announced and set the public hearing for tonight so that any members of the public that were interested in speaking on it could come and talk. Public notice was publicized, and it was also circulated in mail. So what you see on the screen right now is this portion of the public easement. It's a pedestrian way. The side with the tree, this is the side on the Moyer property that we're selling to the adjoining property owner. And then the bottom picture is the connection from Ward. And as you can see, it's been blocked off. So tonight, if you guys choose to approve the vacation, then five feet on each side of these properties will be vacated from a public pedestrian way, and it will become usable by the property owners. So, whoops, wrong way. So this is where the pedestrian way is. Again, this map was recorded in the 40s. It broke up the blocks and provided a way for pedestrians to travel. We don't use it. It's blocked. So all this is, is asking, giving public time to comment, and then letting you guys consider if you would like to vacate that easement.
What street's on the other side? Where it is at West Ward? Just at the very bottom, is that?
So that's Ward between Wayne and Norma, which when this map was recorded, it wasn't called Norma. That's why you're looking at, you're probably looking at the full exhibit, and it's not called Norma, because it was recorded in the 40s.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it. Simple. Easy peasy, lemon squeezy. Any council comments? None? Then we will take, at this time, we will take public comment on the resolution. Do I have any public comment from the floor?
I received no comments.
Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And do I have a motion for approval of the resolution summarily vacating a pedestrian walkway?
So moved.
I have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Ever had, because I was like, picture, picture done. Okay, next item is item number nine. Item number nine is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving the 2021 Annual Progress Report for the City of Ridgecrest General Plan and Housing Element, including the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Plan. Once again, Ms. Burlock.
I'm going to figure out which way this goes. Okay, so tonight, I have the Annual Progress Report for 2021 for the housing element and the general plan. This report covers the calendar year of January 1st through December 31st. The Ridgecrest General Plan was adopted in 2009, and it covers the period until 2030. The housing element was adopted separately in 2015, and that covers until 2023. So the Annual Progress Report for the general plan and housing elements are due to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Office of Planning and Research by April 1st of each year. This report demonstrates how actions that the Planning Commission and City Council took for their implementation of our general plan and our housing element, and it also fulfills our statutory requirements for reporting on our regional housing needs allocation. The elements in the City of Ridgecrest General Plan are land use, military sustainability, community design, circulation, open space and conservation, health and safety, and housing. The general plan includes all the actions that were taken by City Council and Planning Commission. It's a lot, so I'll summarize some of them. But for all the details, the full report is included in your packet. So the Planning Commission and City Council did several amendments to the zoning ordinance. Those included definitions and accessory dwelling units and family daycares. So all of those helped meet state requirements. Again, all those implementation actions, I'm just going to summarize some of them for you. So Planning Commission approved some site plans for Dutch Brothers and also for KFC. Those actions furthered our infill, and then they incorporated increasing consumer choices and community design through the screening of mechanical elements. That also had our dark sky ordinance, which furthers the military sustainability. The circulation design included the streets projects, there were lots of those, and the transit projects. Our health and safety included actions to adopt the current hazard mitigation plan and our school resources officer. And for council actions included the historic designation for the USO building and the Patrick the Festival. So the housing element Annual Progress Report is done on spreadsheets designed by the Housing and Community Development Department. So I'm just going to summarize some of those in the following charts. So for housing units, Planning Commission entitled 148 units through three track maps. In the building department, permits were issued for 91 single-family units, and we had certificate of occupancies issued for 53 additional single-family units. For multifamily, we had permits issued for six of the two-to-four unit multifamily, and certificates of completion were issued for two of those. The multifamily, we had the Mahavi View Apartments, and so they were issued permits for 75 units. And we also had an additional ADU that was permitted as well. So the building permits issued by affordability, for very low, we had 50 permits. For low, we had 25. For moderate, a lot of those were the infill permits, so houses that were going into regular, already existing neighborhoods. We had 44 of those. And then for a... And then for above average, there was 54. So just a summary, um, there was 99 housing applications. In all of those applications, uh, there would be 321 units, 47 of which would be infill. There was 173 building permits and 55 certificates of occupancies. So for our regional housing needs allocation plan, um, in 2015, when this was done, we were, um, slated to have 1,345 units to meet our, um, allocation numbers. In 2021, we've, um, met that with 173 to date. Um, we don't have all of the housing data, cause our systems, um, changed. So I think 2015 and 16 is missing, but we do, um, have all of the data from that. So just to give you guys an overall kind of idea, the total units were 458. So the regional housing needs is till next year. So that leaves us with a, a deficit of 887 units. Um, but the Mahavi View did further us a little bit in, you know, the affordability, cause that was our first. So, um, that's where we're at. We will, um, the Kern Cog is working on our numbers right now for next year. And so those will be adopted this summer. And then we'll be able to go out and start finding consultants to update our housing element, which will be due, um, in December of next year. So these numbers are one of our last. So we did surplus some property last year as well. Um, the two on Boston and one on Moyer, and those were all sold to, um, individuals. And they were sold with the intent for a single-family residential. Um, some of the goals that we have, um, planning commission-wise and staff-wise, we have, um, additional zoning amendments that we'd like to pass before we do our housing element update. So that anything that was in the past that was a goal and anything that's kind of been implemented statewide, um, is addressed before we adopt a new housing element. The general plan, um, the ACUS maps that are in the plan right now are outdated, but they will continue to be outdated until the base completes another one. So, um, staff does continue to work with John, um, from the Navy to review some of our developments. And then we do have some rezoning that we wanna do, um, on properties and probably increasing density for, um, housing. And that concludes my report for the year. So if anybody has any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. So we'll go ahead and start with council questions and we'll go, since I'm sure Kyle's gonna take up 20 minutes, we'll start with Peggy.
You have been tagged.
Yeah.
In one of the Planning Commission meetings that I attended, there was a great deal, great deal of discussion about the ability to put small houses in your backyard. And how did that end up affecting, has anybody done that? And have they made them into homes? And are they working?
And Silryan.
Yeah, so that was the accessory dwelling units. Um, and that's a state law, so we did adopt it, um, so that we are in compliance. And also too, when we adopted some of these codes, there are, um, some abilities for us to add restrictions if we adopt codes. So when we, um, adopt it, we do look at how it impacts neighborhoods and stuff. So we did add some things, um, or, you know, add the strongest regulations we could for accessory dwelling units. And the only one that's been permitted was with a new single-family. So the thing with accessory dwelling units is you kind of have to have a very, um, a very good lot in order to do that. Cause you still have setbacks and you still have, you know, building code requirements for setbacks from the existing structures. So there is a limited availability for many of our parcels. Um, that goes with new regulations as well.
Well, I know there was a lot of, um, discussion from the floor, thinking this was going to ruin the entire city and we'd become, uh, a ghetto, for lack of a better term, with all these three and four and five houses on one lot. And clearly, it couldn't be done. But, and I wondered if anyone did take advantage of it and so we did have the one, so.
Yes, and I believe that was, um, for a family member as well. So it was like a situation where they, um, were building their home and they wanted an additional unit for, you know, a mother-in-law or something.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hayman? My only one comment, then I'm gonna let it keep going that way, is, Ms. Burlock, explain once again for those people that don't, aren't understanding, this is a requirement. Uh, we have an obligation under state law to find and try to fill as many of these holes in our housing availability as council members. That's our, our task job. And I just wanna make sure that that's very clear, is that when we're looking at housing projects or affordable housing projects or housing tracks or anything like that, we are trying to fill the needs that have been identified in this housing plan for our community, as, as a first and foremost. And it, if we don't do that, what happens?
Um, if we don't do that, we're not available for funding. Um, we're not available for many grants. Um, if we don't do this report, we're not available for any funding. You know, so it's, and if we don't, a lot of these things that are already implemented on a state level, we don't have a choice. If someone comes to us, the state law overrides ours. So we can't say no if we just ignore it. All we can do is try to provide the best result for our community on things that we know exist for us.
And loss of the grants further would detriment the, the development and growth of our community, correct?
Right.
Did you, I see the attorney jumping up and down on the right hand side.
Was I really jumping? I'm sorry.
You fight?
No. One point that I wanted to, to clarify, that the, the city's obligation is to provide the mechanisms by which these, uh, this arena allocation can be made, met by developers, by
Correct.
self-help and other, the city doesn't have an obligation to build homes.
Build them though.
So the numbers that Heather was talking about, those are not, we are not required to build that many units. We're required to have the rules and the land identified that could accommodate those units should somebody wish to come and build them. And, and we're required not to have any discretionary barriers in, in, in our zoning, uh, in our, uh, development standard approval.
To facilitate the success
Exactly.
of meeting these expectations.
Exactly.
Oh, wow, that was good.
I'm writing it though.
Wow, I'm gonna write that down.
Okay, I don't have anything else, Solomon?
Ms. Burlock, I do have a couple of questions on the surplus land. So how do we determine we have surplus land? What is the criteria?
So surplus land is anything that we've deemed that we're not going to do a city, um, project on. So it has no public use. Um, a lot of the three parcels that we surplus, um, plus one additional commercial property that's not on that list, cause it's not final yet. But, um, those three were just random lots in town, in housing tracks, that we somehow ended up with ownership of. Um, nobody really had an explanation why. So, um, last year, when we did the annual progress report for 2020, we surplus and went through the process to surplus those properties so that we could sell them. Um, once we surplus something, it's an action where we circulate it to the HCD. And they have a list, Housing and Community Development Department. Um, and so they have, um, a list of developers that we have to send those notices to, to see if.
They have a first option.
Yes, they have, um, they have a 60-day period to respond to us, where we can, um, discuss housing opportunities with them. Um, we didn't get any interest, there's single-family lots. Um, it's not like, it's not a big piece of property. So we did all that and then in July, we were finally able to, um, list them on the open market.
So it applies to commercial also, right?
Yes.
Commercial land. So for the casino land, so we declared that as surplus land? Just curiosity.
No, so the casino property is, um, redevelopment agency property. And then that was under a, a different, um, that was done, they had a.
Long-term, long-term property management.
Long-range property management plan, thank you. I knew it. So they had a long-range property management plan that, um, determined at that time, you know, what the uses of the property were. So that was the action for those.
Thank you. Mr. Blades?
No questions.
He's scared.
Of course he was gonna do that. Okay, now I'll take it back out to the public. Is there any public comment in regards to the, uh, annual progress report? Seeing none from the floor? Seeing none on the phones? Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Do I have, uh, a, uh, any other discussion? If not, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution of the Richcrest City Council approving the 2021 Annual Progress Report for the City of Richcrest General Plan and Housing Element?
So moved. Sorry about that.
Jinx, you owe me a Coke.
I'll give you, I'll give you a second.
I have a motion and, and do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second.
Please vote.
My kids are gonna be very happy that I got a jinx, you owe me a Coke in there.
I always thought it was pinch Coke, you owe me a Coke. Jinx, dancing thing. Five ayes, motion carries.
For my kids right now, it's jinx, you owe me a Coke. Okay, item number 10. Item number 10 is the, uh, our discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman, do you need some more room?
No, we're good.
Here comes the notes.
Thank you, Mayor. So the groundwater authority did meet last Wednesday. And so we had a, it was a, one of our shortest meetings and, uh, so that part was good. But I do have a few things I'd like to go over, um, that we, um, approved at the, at the last meeting. The shallow well mitigation policy was approved. And we also approved a letter of support for the City of Richcrest, uh, wastewater treatment plant state budget request. And so that was a $5 million, uh, request that we're making in, in support of the wastewater treatment facility and particularly in, um, aspect to the, uh, the permitting and the pre-design and preliminary, preliminary design and this, uh, initial engineering of the wastewater treatment plant. And so they requested 5 million backstops of cash shortfall needed to maintain the construction schedule of the wastewater treatment plant. So those were probably the two bigger highlights of the agenda. Um, the Water Resource Manager, um, Stetsons did give a, a good, um, Water Resource Managers' report and I'd like to go over just a few of those highlights. So starting with, um, the annual report, that was one of the items that was discussed and the annual report is, um, due to DWR on April 1st and so that is slated to be on, on track. There were some questions and, and he clarified, so I just wanted to bring some of these up, cause I thought he did a great job in, in discussing it. But, uh, as to the difference between the annual report of the groundwater authority and the five-year GSP update, so they're, they're two very different, um, items. The, uh, annual report is for demonstration to the DWR that we are implementing the GSP. So it's not a review of the GSP or an evaluation of the GSP. Um, another point that was brought up that I thought was, was interesting too and, and important that, that people are, you know, understand is that the, you'll hear it in the public, sometimes people will, um, use the word deficiencies when, on the approval of the GSP, but they're not deficiencies, they are enhancements or recommendations from DWR. And, um, those are actively being considered and, and addressed by the board. Uh, we are, uh, meeting all the DWR Board's requirements and, and, and working very closely with DWR to ensure that we not only meet, you know, the, the GSP, but, uh, follow through with, um, enhancements or recommendations, cause, you know, the, the Board itself wants to, to act on and, and to continue to improve upon that, um, that, the, the GSP in and of itself. The five-year evaluation of the GSP, um, that's more of a, um, corrections or changes in the GSP that would be added. It's, um, safe to say that the annual report, um, actions that are done will be part of that, um, five-year annual report, um, with, you know, a lot of participation from the PAC and TAC committees and the, um, the Board itself. Let's see, what were some other good highlights? Oh, in regards to the, um, the data gap, um, issues that's been brought up on numerous occasions, and I think it's kinda like beating a dead horse at this point, um, Stetson engineers or Steve Johnson and his staff gave a, a, another, um, overall, let's just say corrective, corrective action on, on those, uh, well data points that, or information that had, was lacking from the, from the past two years due to COVID. So it's very clear that they have a, a action plan and they even stated that they have a backup plan for that plan. And so, meaning that the data, the well data will be gathered, um, they are working with the well owners and the, and the Navy to ensure that, you know, we don't have a, you know, a, a break in that data gathering. So just so everybody on the Board is clear, you know, regardless of what you hear, it is a very, let's just say, well acted upon issue, so, um, and I believe that was about it. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So we'll go ahead and start, Ms. Breeden?
I have a, I have a question and a, and a statement, because there was a lot of discussion regarding the two years, the measurements that weren't there. And it, and it really matters, in the whole of everything, it matters, because they're not there. But also, the whole of everything is that for 40 years, we've seen wells dropping. Once in a while, you'll see where the wells are staying the same. And very little information indicates anything, uh, I'm gonna say no indicate, no, no measurements in all those years have seen good come out of it, because the wells, the water is not there. We are using, what was it, um, 30, 20,000 acre feet of water a year and 760, 7,000, uh, 650 acre feet of water being, being recharged. It doesn't make any difference if you've missed two years, if you've got 38 years of data and you're going to start in the 42nd year and get the data. It is important to not allow it to go any longer, but I think it's, it's important. And so I was wondering if you could respond to that, because I heard Steve say some things and I thought it was important that people understood. Those data gaps are merely that.
Right. And that, that's correct. And so I heard it said, and I don't wanna be quoted on this, this number, but I, I believe it was 63% was state, was the number I, I believe was stated at that meeting, as far as the, the amount of data, the amount of data that was gathered, you know, on the well. So if you look at the big picture and it's been stated in the past that, you know, we have been, you know, they've been gathering data on these wells for decades. So in lieu of COVID not getting, you know, a certain amount of data, it's important, for sure. No doubt about it, no, I haven't heard any one person, uh, say that this data isn't important. Um, in the big picture, how much does it affect? Well, that, you know, that's to be, you know, determined, but you could, you know, have an opinion that 60, 63% two years of data, you know, divide that into all the data gleaned, um, over all those years, you're probably talking a very minor impact on any outcome decision-making or data, you know, garnered from that information. So I think it's, and I just wanted to make it real clear that they were very adamant, they have taken very proactive steps to make sure that they, you know, that there isn't, you know, data gaps like that in the future. And so, but I, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. And in regards to the wells, there was a chart that was given as the annual, excuse me, average annual groundwater level change, uh, for water year 2015 to 2021, six years. Uh, this is very tiny print. I wish I had a, you know, if you, if you were lucky to, you know, see the, the, um, attend the meeting and, and see the chart on the screen. It, but basically, it's a map of the basin and it has 93 wells with concordant, uh, data from water year 2015 to 2021, increased 46 wells compared to, uh, water year 2020. Um, and it shows, has it all color, uh, each of the wells color, um, charted so that you can see wells that have a greater than 1.5 foot a year drop. Um, let's see, I wrote down some notes about it, so here, here we go. So nine sites have a one to one and a half foot per year drop, a couple sites had, um, greater than one, or, oh, let's see if I put the arrow in the right direction there. I don't know if the two sites were greater than 1.5 year, I don't think so. I, um, I think that the 1.5 might have been the greater, but it could be, uh, I believe my notes would reflect that it's a nine sites. reflect that it's a, nine sites had, you know, one to one and a half foot of drop. Two sites, I'm gonna say that, my notes are saying that it's, had it less than 1.5, so it'd be, and then 12 sites had a .5 to 1 foot per year drop. So, I mean, I just added up, that was, what, 20, let's see, 23, yeah, over 23 sites that showed, you know, continual, you know, drop in the, in the water table. So, does that kind of add to with what you were?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
I think you hit my question right on the head, which is, have we seen anything that just demonstrated that there was a wild variance in the missing data gaps? And it sounds like there's...
And I will say that is my opinion, you know, when I, when I, you know, present that in that fashion, you know, that, that, I'm not speaking for the Board, but I'm speaking from my perspective.
Nothing. Okay. We'll bring it back, and we will ask if there's any members of public who'd like to speak.
While Mr. Senat's on his way up, I will let you know that I just checked the IWV GA website, and what Mr. Hayman was referring to is on the website. So if anybody wants to go look at that small chart...
So they can go back and look at that on the, on the GA website?
It's on the GA website.
And that would be under the Water Resource Managers' Report, and I believe, you know, like that chart was page 10. But it, he gave a great report and a great overview, so if anybody, you know, was so inclined to want to go back and look at it, I thought it'd be worth your while.
Hey, Mike, before you, thanks for sending that email.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, I really did appreciate that.
Was that helpful?
Well, I had always, I always go back and watch it, like then, you know, once it gets posted later. But I just wanted to say I do appreciate you shooting that out, saying, hey, check out these comments, and just going right to the minutes.
I'll try to do that on a regular basis.
You know, up, up to you, I just...
Other people have mentioned that already, so.
Yeah, no, I was already looking at, I was gonna bring up some things, but Scott already got to it. So, sorry to interrupt.
You're welcome.
Mr. Senat?
Okay, so, big picture, the way I see it, this, this groundwater authority is essentially dead in the water for a couple of years because of all the legal challenges. You really don't have much to do, except for monitor wells, try to come up with some solutions. The, the engineering is gonna continue, gonna try to raise some money. And the foundation of this whole replenishment fee is based on the data. And we don't have the data. We really don't have the data, and this is something the Water District's been saying all along. We underestimate the recharge. We, we don't have well levels, and because of the two-year data gap, we can never recover those levels. So we don't have the, it's not a linear type of measurement that we're taking. It goes up and down. So the, the, the critical aspect of this is getting good data. Now, from a, from a purely cost basis, right now, you're collecting replenishment fee. And that was originally intended to raise, to finance $50 million to buy futures, water futures in the state water market. I think the reliability of that water is zero right now, but it'll change. And I understand the philosophy, or the, the, the plan is to, to use water from the import during wet years and let the, let the valley recharge on dry years, or, or on wet years, and, and import during wet years. I'm kind of of the opinion that if you wanna remove this cloud over the Indian Wells Valley, people, people are now awake about the nature of the problem. The real estate community is concerned because now they have to make disclosures. The impact on real estate is unknown, but I can tell you personally, it's impacted my ability to sell from day one, because I didn't know what to tell people. And so that's, this is a big cloud over economic development, over, over just people's lives. And now they're gonna restrict our usage even further. And a lot of us use evaporative coolers, and this is a problem. I mean, so my, my approach to this is always, everything I do is pretty much activist or advocacy, but it's solution oriented. And I know enough about this valley, and I know about the water, and I know about real estate, and I know the Navy. And we gotta get the Navy's cooperation on, for some solutions. And one of them is the, the treatment, the treated water. And I made a, I've been, I've been working on this for some time, it's, conceptually. And I have made a proposal to the groundwater authority and to the Water District that we get the Navy's cooperation to install a pipeline from, from the wastewater treatment facility to COSO geothermal for deep well injection. And I, I'd like to see a return pipeline of fresh water coming from Rose Valley. So they've already constructed the pipeline from Rose Valley, it's 12-inch pipelines. I think they have two large pumps. There were some legal issues involved in putting that, that pumping system in with the Little Lake owners, but that was resolved. And they, what I understand, they weren't able to extract as much water as they need. So they need fluid at COSO geothermal, and that's also a potential buyer for treated brackish water. So I'm, I'm hopeful that if you get the data gaps filled, if, if there's, if I could have just a couple, couple more seconds. If you get the data gaps filled, if you do some, some reanalysis on the recharge, I believe the recharge rate goes up, so that we're not paying as much as, for the replenishment fee. In other words, we're gonna have more than 7650 in recharge. And then the kicker is getting the consumption down, and I made a proposal, I've talked to Kern County about it, I've, I've reached out to the farmers about a, a land exchange for property on the east, or on the west side of the mountains for the farmers, involving the Navy's Encroachment Management Division. I know that they say they don't have money, but there's ways of finding money for this. And if we can get the farmers out of the picture, they can take their transient pool with them. They have assets, and we can bring the consumption down substantially to the point where the gap of actual usage in this valley and the recharge is small enough that it at least takes us out of serious overdraft status, which would be a huge resolution as far as people's ability to buy or sell real estate. So anyway, that's just some suggestions. I'll be, I'll be talking to people if they would like about more details on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, do I have any public comment on the phones? Sounds like he's there. Caller, state your name.
Yes, good evening. This is Renee Westalusk. I want to thank Councilman Hayman for his excellent summary of the groundwater authority meeting that happened last Wednesday. I did want to ask Councilman Hayman if he can speak to the legal situation of the GA petitioning the court to become a party to the adjudication. If not, you can't speak to that tonight, could you elaborate if this will be covered at the next groundwater authority meeting? And I did see online paperwork that was filed by the groundwater authority attorneys to do, do the petitioning of the court. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Are you still on? Nope, okay. So I'm sure you're, you're listening, and no, I cannot speak as to the legal situation pertaining to the GA and the, and the courts, but I can ask this question to the legal staff at the GA meeting, and I'll try to get you an answer if it's something that can be publicly, you know, brought about.
Okay. We have another caller? Caller, state your name.
Yes, Mike Neal. I want to address a document that some certain, some people, Mr. Rattor and myself, I believe, have brought several times. It's a groundwater authority document that was just talked about. It was the water year 2020 annual report submitted to Sigma. Now, granted, the Water Resource Manager has said that they don't believe, have confidence in, sorry, the storage change in the, in the basin for year 2020, but that's not all the data there is in that report. And this is on, in that report, page 21, Table 5.2. They have data for years, water years 2016 up to 2019 also. Now, there's some serious discrepancies, differences between the numbers in this report and what the reported overdraft in the valley is. Just remembering that the stated overdraft is claimed anywhere to be 20,000 to 24,000 acre feet. Now, this report included the IWV main basin and El Paso subarea, which is, is a part of the basin, and is limited measurement there, but they do have measurements there, and it's included in this report. So let me just give you the numbers and see if you see some, some differences here to the, the large overdraft being reported here as overdraft. Water year 2016, the total for the basin was an increase of almost 1,400 acre feet. Water year 2017, there's only a decrease in the groundwater storage by 1,500, about 1,500 acre feet. 2018, now you get a number that pops up saying that you've got 20,000 acre feet decrease in storage, and that was mainly supposedly a, a large decrease in the storage in the Navy area. And that's a little interesting, I would question that. But that's what they put together and reported. And 2019, only a decrease in groundwater storage of 133 acre feet. You, you take all those, and you take the engineering approach, and you go, okay, things do go up and down in the physical world, let's average it out. You get about an average of a decrease in groundwater storage change in the basin of around 7,000 acre feet. Not, not anywhere close to 20,000 to 24,000 acre feet. Now, what that says is that either they, they somehow neglected the contribution of the El Paso subarea, which characteristically, over those years, when you look at the table, shows an increase in groundwater storage for all the, one year, which, and it wasn't significant, a real significant decrease, or there's some other problems. Now, when we have a, a situation and the magnitude of monies being charged to citizens potentially in this valley that could cause huge economic burden and difficulties over the valley wide, we're looking at putting, throwing the valley potentially out of business because they can't afford the fees with lost hundreds of jobs, you would think you want to do at least a couple of different things to validate this supposed decrease in the groundwater storage. And yet, the GA seems to be tenaciously holding on to the previously held number, and just, they're doing this report, I guess, because they have to, but don't seem to want to really discuss these numbers. The only real betting in these numbers has been by individuals not on the GA board, or, or the staff either one, as far as I remember. And this is something that's very significant, and, you know, we're in the engineering world, you would say, let's get at least one other semi-direct or direct measurement method going, so we can have, you know, two to three ways to measure this, to make sure that we bring those things to agreement and feel like we really do know what's going on. And, and that's the problem is, the GA has charged forward from the, the assumption that was placed on the table way back in 2016, and went forward with that, and, and not looking at direct measurement kind of calculations of the change in the groundwater storage. They need to be doing that, need to pay attention to it, and they need to bring that before the public and discuss how they're gonna reconcile this huge difference that is, is on their record, in their reports, being provided to the state. This needs to be addressed seriously.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have another caller? Caller, state your name.
Yes, this is Renee Westalusk again, calling back because I wanted to clarify to Mr. Hayman about the groundwater authority petitioning the court to be a party of the adjudication. I want him to know, and maybe he could pass this on to the groundwater authority board, that this was announced at the Monday night meeting, at the Water District meeting. They announced that. And they also announced that the GA had filed a demure against Mojave, Pistachio, and Searl Smalley Mineral. I think it's over the, the fact that those two entities have not been paying their replenishment fees. But I wanted also to pass on to the council and to Councilman Hayman that some of the water board meeting discussion, they say a lot of things about the groundwater authority that's possibly not true, in my opinion, and it might be important to tune into their meetings on a regular basis if you have the time. Thank you.
Oh, no, I, I watch them, Renee. I watch them, and I hear all these things.
Okay.
And...
And I do, too.
Same here.
We all do.
And I hear the comments, it's, I'm sitting here trying not to say more than I should, but I appreciate it, Renee.
Okay.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay.
Thank you, Renee, and I will, I will discuss this with the, with the Board and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And it appears I have no other callers on the phone. Any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that item, and we'll move on to, yes, we're all staring at you, Kyle. Next is committee reports. Do you want me to grab finance?
I'll back you up on it.
Okay. Finance Committee met on March 8th. We are actively getting into budget season. A budget workshop will be coming. I think it's the first meeting in May, I think, is what's scheduled for the budget workshop. As I stated earlier, I welcome anybody to attend those finance committee meetings. And the best thing I can say is, is we have an incredible staff and team at the city, and they're all working towards rectifying the salary situation. And the conversations at finance level, I can assure you, every single meeting is, where are we on progress with this, and how can we come up with a solution? And I would simply say that the budget workshop should hopefully address some of those areas that we hope to see some resolution, and certainly areas where, hopefully to reflect what the council's position is. So, said it before, I know all five of us are largely agreed, but just reiterating one more time, we'd welcome you there. On a positive note, from a finance perspective, you know, we have a lot of very positive trends moving for this community. We, we don't have the, the revenue buckets that we're looking for, but we have positive trending, especially on sales tax and Measure V, and, and those self-sustaining measures of our community are doing their job in ensuring that the city services that our citizens expect are there for them. And I think that that has been well demonstrated through Measure V. I don't have anything else from finance that's a specific... I don't have anything else from finance that's so specific, did you?
No. I mean, you, you hit it on the head and there was discussion on the employee compensation aspect of our, and our concerns. And as Councilwoman Reed had stated in the, in our last meeting, it is definitely follow up and follow through with what we've been concerned with and wanting to see with the changes. And so we're going to continue.
Working on it. Okay. I don't think there's any other meetings that occurred. Other committees, boards, or commissions, I'm going to just get out of the way. I know East Kern Economic Alliance met. I was not able to attend, but Mr. Janik attended for Charlie Alliance. And I know he took a few other people, I know he took at least one other person down there. I shouldn't say a few, I know one other person. I apologize. My work schedule does not let me escape. Any other boards, commissions? No? Okay. Looks like we are on to city manager report?
The only thing I have is a few weeks ago, I announced that we were going to play Burrows High School. We have a date, April 8th. School will be in session that night, for them, not us. And, yeah, we will win. We will win. We won't lose. There will be no loss. No points. We don't need points.
What, what time?
We have cuffs. Cone Tadson is retiring, so that's a huge loss. He was a great, great coach, great mentor to those kids. I'm hoping he's like Tom Brady and he'll change his mind. And we did have some, we had the awards banquet a couple of weeks ago. One of our kids was first team all league and we had two that were second team all league. And we have two that got picked up by some big traveling clubs. Two were playing for West Coast Elite, one for Rockfish, and then I don't know the league name out of Victorville. So they're doing great things up there. So I hope everybody comes out and watches us display our talent.
If it helps, Chief.
For lack thereof.
Chief, I can assure you that everybody will be out there to watch it.
Yes.
Because it's called video.
What?
And we're getting good at it.
What time is it?
What time is this humbling beat down of the old guys?
I think we're shooting for seven o'clock, just so, you know, after dinner, we'll let those guys eat because they're going to need their energy. So we won't eat because we don't want to have the janitors have to clean anything up. So.
It sounds like you've issued a camera.
Isabel, Isabel laughed, but this would be a great TikTok.
As I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, I was rather nice, I thought. And they decided at the awards banquet that they were going to play the clip from that meeting and then, and then talk some, some smack. So it should be fun. It'll be a great time.
So basically, you're like Brass Depot. You're just keeping everyone refilled with more ammunition.
That's right. That's right. Yep. It won't disappoint.
Next would be future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items that any council member wishes to have future agenda? I know the resolution for the land process resolution, the resolution's written, the staff report was not, didn't meet its timely deadline, shall we say. I, I, there's a militant down there at the end that has deadlines on me. And any other future agenda items? Anybody? No? Mayor and council comments? I'll go ahead and go left to right. I keep going to Peggy, so you get to go first this time.
Oh, that's okay. I meant to mention earlier that the, you know, Burrows made history with the robotics group. I think everybody probably saw that on social media. The VEC State Robotics Championships last weekend in San Diego, Burrows team qualified for the world championships in Texas this May. So good on them for doing that. I was going to expand a little bit on my trip up to Monterey for ICSC. It was, for those that don't know, ICSC is a conference where you go and basically talk to any kind of retail restaurants. Other, I mean, there's everything you can think of. There's chain car washes. I mean, you name it, there's businesses there. And so myself and a member of the staff went up and talked to as many businesses as we can. There's a lot that are really, they're really interested in coming. So a lot of people want to be here. They're looking for franchise owners. That was the biggest thing I heard from at least four different businesses who said, we've already looked at your data, we've seen the numbers, we know where Rich Crest is, you don't even have to sell it. We just need a franchise owner and we'll be there. So that's, it was positive to me, right? Like, we're doing something right. So that was good.
Good news.
Solomon? The outlook conference, economic outlook conference last month, that was a good success. A lot of information and it was well attended beyond expected. So thank you all who have attended the conference and I'm, I hope you got something out of that conference. Thank you.
Scott?
Let's see. I'm just going to add that we have a parks, a quality of life parks meeting will be on March 23rd at 5:30. So that's not our regularly scheduled. This is a special quality of life meeting. So we'll have it on March 23rd at 5:30 and then resume our regularly scheduled program. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Reed for his update on the race. I just think it's important that we, and with the comment about Frontier coming in, you know, there's a lot going on and there'll be more of this same, you know, environment for you for a long time. So I know you've got your hands full and appreciate you greatly, trying to stay ahead and on top of it. And it's even going to be more so important here in the very near future. So I'm sure we'll want, you know, to bring you back in that hot seat again at some point when we think, and you think there's enough. Yeah. But we do appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of small ones. First, when we were naming events, I didn't name an upcoming event for Friday, March 25th, which is the Respect for Law Dinner at Kern McGee. I know several of us on the dais are going to be there. I would, if you have family members, especially if you have family members that have been touched by what a first responder does to support your family or has protected your family, it's a great opportunity just to come out, have a meal, and also just show the depth of appreciation. One of the things that was mentioned earlier was talking about, I guess you could call it favoritism amongst departments and salaries. But, I mean, our police department is down people right now and we know we're down people. It is a substantial challenge for our community to recruit and retain. And I can't stress enough why that's so important. We have to continue to build out our community infrastructure to make this the best possible community for families to want to come to. We have a great cost of living. We've got a great housing opportunity and we, above and beyond everything else, we've got a lot of positive momentum going into the next several years that now is a great time to be a part of this community, especially if you're a housing investor or an investor, period, as Mr. Blades just told you. We need investors. I can't tell you how many times I've, I've responded to a Facebook post about, we want a go-kart center, or we need a pool, or we want a this, or we want a that. And I just want to reiterate to the public, if you have the money to invest in one of those ventures, we are willing, ready, and able to talk to you. Door's open. However, if you do not have those monies, or if you have family members that don't have those monies, I appreciate that your wants can't always be filled by our, by our abilities. We're working hard on that and you're going to have a choice as a citizen to stand up and say, I want to continue to see these things happen in my community at some point in the near future. Next, if you happen to have a family member who does have a lot of money and is looking for an opportunity to invest, as Mr. Blades once again mentioned, and we've heard, we have franchises out there that want to come to our community. But what do they take? They take somebody taking the risk. They take an entrepreneur, putting up their home, getting their family involved, putting up the money to make that reality happen for themselves. It's the beauty of the American spirit. It's the beauty that created our country. And if you happen to have family members who are really clamoring for a Wendy's hamburger and don't know where to go, we got people for you to talk to. Okay? Now, fast food's not my first choice, but trust me, things are working and we're working hard for those things, but we're doing it with, with a resource bucket that's not very full. Our April 6th meeting, I will, I hope to be back. I'm just making sure that the council's aware. I will be in Sacramento on an advocacy trip on the 4th and 5th of April. I intend to be back for the meeting on the 6th, but there's a heads up just in case. And then last, I wanted to make sure that I took just a brief moment and Jessica, if you're, if you're listening, I assure you, this is not in any way, shape, or form a derogatory towards your article, but the number of people that have asked me over the last week of, am I choosing to step down as mayor immediately when I have absolutely no intention of doing that anytime soon? And so I'd like to reiterate the comments shared at the Rich Crest City Council, the Rich Crest Chamber of Commerce meeting, in which I complimented every single one of my colleagues. And what is unique about this council is that we each have very specific and, and knowledge roles and that we play those roles together in a way that makes a cohesive team. It's like saying if I had five, five-foot-eleven speedsters on a basketball team, Jed might actually win. Right? As opposed to having a center, a point guard, a shooting guard, you know, and, and an entire team, power forward, small forward. And, and I was complimenting that. So for the record, Mr. Blades, I just wanted to once again reiterate what a, what a joy it's been to get to know you because I knew these people prior to us serving together as you and I have, have joined. And, and that is what I was conveying is that I have a fantastic council, complimented every single one of you. And then I, you know, of course, put my foot directly into my mouth and said Kyle would be great as the next mayor, which meant nothing more than I think that he has an incredible heart for this community and I wanted him recognized for that.
But you used the word stepping down.
I said, when, okay? Or if.
I've told everybody, like, I don't have the energy he does. I don't know how you do it. I don't.
Yeah. So I, like I said, I just wanted to make sure I at least cleared the table of that one for now. And I don't think I have anything else. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting at 8:01. Who had 8:30?
Me.
So you lost?
I won.
Oh, you have to be over?
I had nine.
Oh, no, this wasn't a 9:15. With that, I wish you all a wonderful evening. Have a great evening. We'll see you on the 6th of April.